All right, good evening. I'd like to call the September 9th, 2024 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connelly, presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Willis for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and consider it a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connelly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connelly, have a form.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask that City Council remove, under special recognitions, item number one, the Greenville Tar Heel 11U All-Star Baseball Team. Let us know that they could not make it tonight, so I ask Council to remove that item.
So moved. And I would like to ask to remove item number 12, approval of the proposed 2025 schedule for City Council meetings, to make a comment.
And we would remove that during when we get to the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. And Mayor, do we need to vote on that first change?
Are you looking at the consent agenda?
No, no, this is from the agenda. I would like to make a motion that we remove items 15 and 16 from tonight's agenda and schedule them for a future workshop.
Item 15.
All right. Mr. Attorney, did you have something you needed to say?
That's on the agenda. This council's prerogative, if the council, the majority of the council wants to continue those items, that's within your discretion. So you can do it now, or you can wait till later, but she's asked that it be considered now. It's got a second.
All right.
I have a question for the City Manager. How quickly can we get it into workshop?
I mean, if it would be the will of the council, we could present it tonight, and then, and if the council has other questions about the item, then we could bring it back next month to a City Council meeting, or we could continue it to a future workshop, such as next month.
Clarification, was it just 16 or 15 and 16?
Well, since 15, I'm sorry, I should've said 16 and 17. Thanks, Matt. Let me change my motion to continue items 16 and 17 to a future workshop in October if possible.
So do you have to remove the first motion, since we've got a second? Is that correct?
It's just a minor change to my motion.
Are we making an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, but it's not before the body yet, because you hadn't stated the question, so she can make a change to her motion.
Yeah, and thank you, Matt. It's 15 and 16 and 17.
All right, and so is, before we vote on this, is the request just to move it to the next workshop?
Or whenever our City Manager can schedule it.
I mean, we're prepared to discuss it tonight, but if it would be the will of the council, then we could definitely take it to a workshop in October.
May I ask a question, Mayor? Why do you want to do that?
Well, because it is an issue that I believe, as a council and as the people of Greenville, we're talking about the potential sale of a large piece of public property, or an essential piece of public property, that sits right in the heart of our city, right in the heart of my district. And I wanted us, as a council, to take some of the pressure off, having to move on it tonight, let us have a fuller discussion of it at a workshop.
What information is not in the packet that you think you need to have in order to make a decision?
Well, this land belongs to the people of Greenville, and it's right beside Green Springs Park. And the opportunity for us, as a city, to have more urban parkland is pretty much gone, because we have grown so much. We're not likely to purchase urban parkland. And we have a parcel of land that we already own, so we don't have to outlay any money for that. And so my thinking is that before we rush into a sale, let's have a conversation, as a council, and with the community, about this parcel of land at 10th and 5th Street, to see if we do want to sell it. Can it become part of Green Springs Park in any way? Is there another municipal use that we could have for it? Could we perhaps take some of the back part to not sell that, and have that become part of Green Springs Park? In other words, to retain the green corridor that is already in place. There are other potential uses for it, such as, please, Substation in the east might want to go there. The cost to demolish the building and clean up the lots, $150,000. We could not possibly get parkland for that. So before we rush to make a decision, after talking with my peers on council, some of them have said, yeah, let's take a minute, let's pause, let's have a conversation about this.
Okay. Is there something in the materials that doesn't answer any concern you have?
It's not a matter of what's in the materials, it's a matter of having a conversation with the community, and with all of us on council, about what are the alternatives, trying to envision what it could be used for, and having a discussion about, is this what we want to do right now? Could it potentially become part of Green Springs Park? Could it potentially be used for a greenway in some way? What are our options?
Okay, thank you.
So...
And Mayor, we were prepared to answer a lot of those questions in the presentation.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, too. What do you think that they wouldn't be able to discuss tonight? Because we have been talking about this for a while. So what is it about staff tonight that you don't think that questions will be? And we'll have discussions amongst ourselves, once that happens as well.
Well, as far as, since I've been on the council, and maybe there was some discussion before I returned to the council in 2022, but I've heard this mentioned once, and it was not in the form of a conversation or dialogue, it was, this is something we're going to probably do. And with appreciation to Michael, he and I have talked quite a bit about this, I just believe that this is something that the community is very interested in. And having, rather than having information presented to us, I believe it's a conversation that should take place, that should engage more people, before we make a decision.
So do you plan on having some town halls about this, or?
I mean, we could certainly do that, but I think, to the point that we maybe don't want to delay it, I think that you can have public engagement and public conversations, without necessarily having, you know, a full-blown town hall. You can call people, you can have emails to ask. I've already gotten several people have contacted me by email.
Just a suggestion, I mean, can we not just hear the information that the staff is prepared to do it, and if you're not ready to move forward with it after the information's presented, that you can make a motion to table it to a workshop or a meeting in the future?
Well, that's why I made the motion that I did, which is, let's go ahead and get it in a workshop. Let's go ahead and kind of take, you know, put the brakes on, so that we can have this conversation in a workshop, without a resolution already prepared for us, and kind of being kind of ushered right up to the door of approving it, without having had, you know, just a time to, you know, to talk with people in the community, and to have a fuller discussion about it. Because tonight, we haven't had that conversation with the community yet.
Well, to staff's credit, though, this is what they do every single meeting, for every single agenda item, and it's published to the general public, so they can come and voice their opinion, if they're in favor or not. And then we need to take that feedback and make a decision, as informed council is elected by the citizens of Greenville, to make that decision.
There's no public hearing about this. This is something that appeared on a public agenda, true, but it appeared last Wednesday. And this is, you know, more than likely, the first time that most people in Greenville have heard about this. And since it is such a centrally-located piece of property, and since it is right beside a park, and since it's really our last opportunity for urban parkland, I thought, well, let's just put the brakes on and have a fuller discussion as a council.
I'd be honest with you, I don't think I would want any kid playing in between 10th Street and 5th Street as a park. That's extremely dangerous.
And Mayor, I think that, I mean, that's part of the conversation of making the presentation. So, I mean, it's the will of the council, but I say, we are prepared to make a presentation tonight. If after the end of that presentation, the council still decides it wants to have another month to consider the information that's been shared, then we could bring back another discussion next month for consideration to move forward. But it's up to the council and the will.
Matt was trying to speak, I wanted him.
I was just going to say, I think that's a proper compromise, and honors the time and work the staff has put into the presentation. I think it would be proper for us to hear the presentation, and then if we feel reservations still at that time, that we could table it to the next meeting and make suggestions about workshops as well.
And I would mirror that, because if, once the staff does their presentation, then that gives the community the opportunity to hear everything in full, and then, you know, make a motion if so desired. That makes sense. Do I need to withdraw my motion?
Yes.
Okay. Given those considerations, I will withdraw my motion.
All right.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I would ask that item four, that you all consider the revised speed limit ordinance was just a clerical change, the city code section was incorrect, and so I'd ask you to consider the revised ordinances that is at your desk. And also, I would ask the council amend the agenda by including a closed session to be read at the end of the meeting.
I move to amend our agenda to add a closed session to our meeting.
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Scully. Any other discussion?
And that's all of it, right? Motion to do all of that.
That's right. Get rid of everything else before. All right. All votes in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Oh, motion's at six zero. Sorry.
The suspense. The suspense. All right, now the most exciting part of the night, we're going to work on special recognitions. All right, the Jackie Robinson Baseball League was incorporated in 1991. Since that time, the league has dedicated its effort into providing guidance and mentorship through baseball. The city of Greenville is happy to be a strong supporter of the league, and looks forward each year to greeting the players at the opening ceremonies. Last month, the 10U and 12U teams traveled to Maryland to compete for the James Mosher League in the Legacy Tournament, a biennial tournament born out of both leagues' mutual affiliation with the Carl Ripken Jr. Foundation. We are pleased to recognize and congratulate both teams on their decisive victories, and we look forward to welcoming you all back when you face off again in the tournament in 2026, this time as the host team. The Legacy Tournament was birthed out of the James Mosher League and the Jackie Robinson League's mutual affiliation with the Cal Ripken Jr. Foundation. This is a biennial, I'm sorry, it looks like they wrote it twice. Biennial tournament, which was take place in Greenville in August 2026. Both leagues are looking forward to growing the tournament to include two additional teams in 2026. We're very appreciative of the partnerships that we have with Greenville Recreations and Parks Departments, and thank the city for supporting the league over the last 33 years. We are very blessed in the city to have some incredible athletes, and we've got some incredible leagues. Jackie Robinson League is an incredible league that offers young citizens in our community the opportunity to play the sport. But the one thing that I love most about the Jackie Robinson League is, there's such an emphasis on growing each of the kids, through learning different things that will help them throughout life, but also, there's an emphasis on having good grades. I know Ms. Norma always talks about the kids have to have good grades to play in the league, and I know that they do a wonderful job, and they've got incredible leadership from the top, that makes sure that they emphasize that each and every year. So we've got some presentations for each of you, so I guess as we call your name, please come forward and accept our certificate. Which one are we going to start with? 10U. So you guys are prepared. Marquez Blue Jr. Congratulations. Ellis Brown. You guys weren't this timid on the baseball field, were you? Carter Bryson. Jacoby Fisher. Jace Hodges. All right, all these guys are back at home studying right now, I'm telling you, I know it. Camden Johnson. Jaden, you look like a homerun hitter. James, you got wheels, don't you? Casey Summerlin. All right, Casey, I don't know. Will you pitch her? Ah, I think I know the thing. Congratulations, Casey. Tyler Williams. Tyler, you look like you got wheels, too. You quick. How many stolen bases you have? A few? Austin Jones. Brandon Cox. Brandon, you look like a good coach. Bob Wiggins. Hey, he's at home mentoring all the kids, I know it. All right, that's it for the 10U. Congratulations, guys. Cameron, what position you play? Catcher?
I'll catch.
All right, what's your pop time? 1.8, right? Mason Brown. Mason, what position you play? Pitcher? I was going to say pitcher. You got the height. Second base?
First.
First base, all right, close. Congratulations, Aiden. Miles Davis. All right, Tyree, what do you got? What position?
Left field.
Left field, all right. Right field, right? I got a little bit of help, man. I don't know, I've got somebody that might have said you play shortstop, is that right? Mason, what position you play? Oh, hey, I just got told you're the fastest on the team, is that true? How many stolen bases you get?
I was going to say 14.
You don't even know how many stolen bases you got? Is that me? All right, congratulations. Josiah, what position you play?
Third base.
Third base, that's right. I can see that. Congratulations.
Got to have a bat, too.
How many home runs you hit? One? Who led the team in home runs? How many did you have? Six!
No, no, no. I'll give a six.
Kayden Moore.
How many shortstops you got? That's why they win.
Giovanni Simon Harris, Simon Harris. Hey Frankie, I got to tell you something. He might be the best coach in Pitt County. He's got his last name Best, so. All right, the fan favorite. Right here. Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations. Brian Phillips. All right, let's give him a round of applause one more time. Hey, we're going to play Home Run Derby out there in the street after we're done. Nah, you can stay there.
I need someone to spray it out. Okay, do it there. Okay, go this way.
Y'all leaving? No.
No, they heard we're going to do number 16 and 17 now, they're staying.
Thank you all for coming.
We're getting going, hell, our staff orders. That's so good to see us kids like that.
Yeah, I came in late, remember? He does, doesn't he?
Everybody just left down right there.
It reminds me of Ken, our U.S. Police officer. A lot of Ken. Hold on, not restless, Jenelle, 20 minutes.
Goodbye. It don't matter.
You're good, you keep up.
Maybe some more people will come.
That was awesome.
All right, now we move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be a subject of the public hearing conducted at this meeting, same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who are registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Mayor Connelly, we do not have any registered speakers.
What? Anyone that would like to come and speak in the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. Do a full scan of the room. Scene nine will close the public comment period. We shall move on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three, under consent agenda, resolution of support for the North Carolina Department of Transportation improvements to the on and off ramps of the North Carolina 43 and U.S. 264 interchange. Item number four, ordinance to revise a speed limit for NC 33 East 10th Street in the city of Greenville to concur with the North Carolina Department of Transportation ordinances. Item number five, the 2024-25 Downtown Greve Partnership Contract for Services. Item number six, resolution approving a lease agreement with the Magnolia Arts Center Incorporated for the Perkins Complex Building. Item number seven, resolution authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1007 Douglas Avenue, parcel number 82103, to Habitat for Humanity of Pitt County. Item number eight, ordinances and reimbursement resolution for Greenville Utility Commission's Electric Capital Project budgets for the Boviet Solar Technology Project. Item number nine, authorization to accept the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters grant to install fire alarm systems at the Fire Rescue Station 3, and install vehicle-mounted exhaust treatment systems on seven fire rescue apparatuses. Item number 10, authorization for the IT Department to migrate Tyler Technologies products, Munis, and Intergov to Tyler's cloud platform. Item number 11, resolution declaring four vehicles as surplus, and authorizing to purchase four replacement vehicles and one additional piece of equipment for Public Works Sanitation Division. Item number 12, approval of the proposed 2025 schedule of City Council meetings. Item number 13, budget scheduled for fiscal year 2025, 2026. And finally, item number 14, various tax refunds greater than $100.
Make a motion to approve.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. She was trying to do that.
I would like to remove item number 12, approval of the proposed 2025 schedule, just for a comment.
All right, anything else? Alright, anything else? Don't do it, don't do it.
Nope, I'm just gonna make a motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
We shall move on to item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12, approval of the proposed 2025 schedule of city council meetings.
I just wanted to make a comment for the public because based on citizen feedback, citizens had asked me to check on the proposed 2025 schedule due to the fact that there's been in many cases in the past, the council, the county commissioners, and the school board have met on the same night, and citizens felt like they were having a hard time being able to participate or having to choose which, which one to participate in because we were often meeting on the same night. So I just wanted to elevate the fact that I did check with staff on that, and for 2025 there are only three occasions that we will be meeting on the same night. For that reason, I moved to approve item number 12, approval to, of the proposed 2025 schedule.
Second with those comments.
Man, I like that. Motion's been made by Councilmember, you made the comment, right?
Yes.
Foreman, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Alright, we'll move on to new business.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15, under new business, Town Common Bulkhead Esplanade project update. Now call forward our executive director of Recreation and Parks and Capital and Facility Projects, Don Octagon, to begin presentation.
Alright, getting in there, members of council.
Hey, at the beginning of the meeting, you thought you were gonna get off. You heard that we, we're gonna poll 15 and 16, not 16 and 17.
I actually got nervous.
You about, you about hit that door back there.
So wait a second. Alright, Tom, we're gonna give an update on the Town Common Bulkhead in June 2023. City staff contracted with Moffett Nickel on task order number two for the Town Common Bulkhead replacement, which included completion of construction documents and required permitting for the project. Currently, the task order number two is at 60% construction documents, and that's why we're here tonight to provide an update. Mark Perrello, senior engineer with Moffett Nickel, is here tonight along with Martin Anikam, project and development manager for the city. They, along with the design team, have done a great job on this project, and we appreciate the opportunity to provide an update tonight. In June 2022, a structural condition assessment was conducted on the over 1,500-foot bulkhead in Esplanade area. The assessment found the bulkhead to be in poor condition and towards the end of its serviceable life at 55 years old, it's currently 57 now. It is important to note that the bulkhead replacement was the number-one-ranked capital project in the 2023 city council adopted comprehensive recreation parks master plan, so this is one of our top projects and has been for the city for the past few years. This slide shows existing conditions, shows the deterioration in some parts and the age of certain areas of the steel bulkhead. What it does not show is the damage behind the steel bulkhead, which was shown during the, which was sawed during the site investigation. During investigation analysis, calculated the bulkhead is overstressed beyond its allowable capacity approximately 48% by vehicle load and 30% by pedestrian load, not immediate concern, but one that still shows that the bulkhead should still be replaced. Due to the study conducted in 2022, staff did implement some operational changes. Circled in red there is the area behind the amphitheater. During this time, we have limited the vehicle traffic behind the, behind the amphitheater, especially during events, just to ensure the safety of park users and also event goers. I'm glad to say that some of the details you'll see tonight is the project will improve access for event organizers, which will help enhance entertainment opportunities for Town Common in the future. Now, this project will reimagine resilience for the Town Common, will protect the park from flooding, and improve access to the Tar River, and enhance park activation through introduction of new amenities. Now, I'll kinda talk about where we are with the plan and some project updates. Before we do that, though, it's important to remind council that community engagement was a very important component of the design process. As you see, over 440 participants took an online public survey that was open for 30 days. They were asked to select two concepts, concept A and concept B. Tonight, you'll, you'll see the update for concept A. Also included several amenities that could be included in the design, and if you look at question number two on the right-hand side of the screen, I'm glad to say that several items that you see here are included in the design that we'll provide an update on. Also like to mention that city staff will plan to educate the community in the fall about the project and where we are. It'll, at upcoming events, the first being the National Light Out event headed up by our Greenville Police Department on October 1st at the Town Common, as well as by some bridge events in the fall. So this is the current design, this is the concept that was decided by community input. Shown here are the main priorities of the design, maintain flood protection, improve access to the Tar River, enhance the pedestrian experience, provide multiple circulation routes, incorporate environmental enhancements, and minimize maintenance and post-flow cleanup for city staff. Shown here is bulkhead replacement, so from the amphitheater west, the bulkhead replaced as it is, as you see at the day, the same height. East of the amphitheater, it will be, the bulkhead will be constructed more into the park, creating a closer access to the river. There'll also be a bulk, a boardwalk that will connect the, the area, the plaza you there behind the amphitheater to the current kayak launch. This shows the plazas, plaza and overlook area. This design includes an overlook area on the western portion of the, of the bulkhead. It'll look east down the Tar River, also includes two plazas that will have shade structures, outdoor tables, and seedings. And then also, this will include a multi-use trail that will link activity zones in the park, but also link our current greenway system, and provide a dedicated pedestrian route, which our currently Town Common does not have. And also important to note, the bulkhead, excuse me, the boardwalk area will include three swings also for park users to enjoy. Riverfront access is also included in the, in design, includes two seating areas, one west of the amphitheater and one near the current kayak launch. Also, it'd include a, the planned design includes 150-foot boat access floating dock off the Town Common, just west of the current kayak launch, also which provide access for boaters coming from the, up the river. Alright, next is up is the project timeline and funding overview. So in January 2023, we shared the initial concept with council. Now, we're currently at the pre-final design in September 2024. The estimated cost originally was 19 million, currently it sits at 22 million for the project. In October 2024, we expect the final design to be complete. In January, all the permit authorizations is estimated to be received at that point as well, I'll talk about that in the next slide. Our goal right now is to advertise for construction bids in February of 2025, with an important goal, important target date of summer 2025 for construction. Although the project is on a great timeline, there are a few components that could potentially impact the next steps. Mr. Perrello and his staff are making good progress on regulatory permit approvals with the state and federal environmental agencies. This process will continue through the, the year into early 2025. Any delays with the approvals could impact the, the proposed timeline. In addition, due to river moratorium to rotate wildlife, work in the river is only allowed certain months of the year, therefore it's important the project construction contract is awarded early 2025, which will allow the selected contractor to mobilize and begin construction in the summer of, of next year. Construction taking, construction can only take place in the river during certain months. If, and, if construction contractors do not mobilize in the summer of 2025, we miss a win of opportunity for construction to take place in the, in the fall for the, in the river. So it's important we make sure we stay on this timeline as much as possible so we don't have to delay the project a year, which could add negative impacts on the cost of the project. Proposed funding, the project will be funded through a combination of following, state appropriations, city fund balance, city debt financing. In the 2023, the city agreement will receive $5 million. State appropriation to assist in funding the Town Common Bulkhead replacement project. Very grateful for this contribution, as it is a very important project for the city. Would like to thank our local delegation for their continued support of this impactful project for our community. The city will also continue to seek additional state assistance in 2025 long session to fund the project. And with that, I would gladly answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Octagon? Any more questions for Mr. Octagon? I'm just kidding. Councilmember Blackburn.
I know that, that we're restricted to only working during cer, during certain months. Can this be done within a calendar year, within those certain allowable months?
So I think it's, right now, we're anticipating construction to be 18 to 24 months. So yes, if we can get, hit our target dates, it is possible to work through those times that allow in the river and still be finished within 18 months of that time period.
So, if you work during the, I guess you, maybe the winter months you're able to work?
That's correct.
I'm just trying to figure out if you're not able to, I'm, I imagine it has to do with maybe spring and fish activity and that kind of thing. So if you can't work during those months, so you just pause your work during those months, and then you resume again when you have the, when you're able to work, is that how that would go?
That's correct. The goal would be to get all the work near the river done in that time period. So there's a lot of other work that has to be done that does not impact the river itself. So to answer your question, yes, it could be done as long as we hit that target date.
The work that involves the river has to be done within a very specific window.
About four months.
But there's other work to be done.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So in essence, Don, the bulkhead work has to be done during a very specific period in the river, and you believe, or they believe, or we believe that it can be done in that period of time as to the bulkhead, but the entire project may take 18 months.
That's correct. Now, weather delays could impact, so I mean, it's, there's a lot of impacts that could happen, but that, that's correct.
And that, and that's why it's so important for us to stay on target with the calendar for this project. I can't just, I can't say enough about the, the fact of our local delegation was able to help us secure $5 million for, for the project, and we have consistently made this the number-one top priority with our state delegation as a project, as a transformative project that not only is a quality of life for the, for the city, but also is a flood mitigation project down on our, on our river and for our downtown community. So we will continue to advocate through the long session next year for full funding of this project through state appropriations, but, but also stay on the, the timeline to put us in a position where we can, we can put it out to bid and contracts for construction and start that construction in the summer of 2025.
Have we, have we found any type of federal funding that would be available? I know we've, I, I've attended the, the water summit that was here in Greenville, and I think they're having one, if they haven't had it yet, and they were having one pretty soon, I think, was it down in Wilmington? Was that where it was?
Exactly. Yeah, we have, we have tried to tap any federal funds as well. This is more so of, of a state mitigation project. We found that there, there's the potential, maybe through the Army Corps, but those take usually, unfortunately, decades to be able to pursue. And we just, given the fact it's already about 60 years old.
Kinda like the DOT funding. Alright. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. The next item under new business is, and this is a tag team on item number 16 and 17, we will start with item number 16, resolution to enter into an interlocal agreement with Pitt County for the sale of 2815 East 10th Street, parcel number 29072 and 0 East 5th Street, parcel number 29310. I'll now call forward our assistant city manager, Renee Alexander, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city manager.
Good evening.
As city manager said, this is a resolution to enter into an interlocal agreement and to sell property located at 2815 East 10th Street and 0 East 5th Street. And so what we will do is talk about both, all of the information is relevant to both items, so this presentation will cover both items and subsequent motions thereafter. So just a little bit of background of the property, it is located at 2815 East 10th Street and 0 East 5th Street. It's about two acres, and it is currently zoned commercial. And in 1937, the city initially acquired several portions of this particular property, and in 1950, the city and county jointly acquired subsequent areas of the property with an intent to lease it to the state of North Carolina and the Department of Motor Vehicles, and specifically the State Highway Patrol. State Highway Patrol had built buildings, set up shop, and they transacted, transacted business on the site for about 70 years, and abandoned the site about three years ago when they built their new facility on Old Creek Road. There was an active lease on the property prior to DOT and DMV moving their, their facilities, and in 2023, that lease was terminated by the city, the county, and the state. And that did come before council in March of 2023, seeking approval to be able to terminate that lease, and it was unanimously approved by the city council at that time. Looking at some additional background, the property did have an appraisal conducted on in, in May, and the appraisal amount came back at about $2.8 million. And, and as part of the notes in the appraisal, it stated that the highest and best use for the particular property was quoted as redevelopment. The tax value of the land and the improvements is set at about 1.8 million. The appraisal also noted that the buildings on the particular site are at the end of their useful life, and they do need to be demolished. I do know that councilmember Blackburn mentioned the cost to demolish the property, the facilities on the site was about $150,000, and that was a quote provided within the appraisal, but that does not include the city dealing with the environmental concerns. And so as I go on, I'll talk about the estimated cost to be able to remediate the site and clean up any environmental issues that would be identified. Another big important part is I did mention that this property is owned by both the city and the county. In terms of the actual split, the city owns about 83% of the property, and the county owns about 17%, and that came from us acquiring the property at, at different times. And so we did acquire more property in the beginning that the city owns by itself. And we have done a limited title search and a boundary survey to help support those particular percentages. So this is just a, an aerial overview of the actual property. Right now, it's currently two parcels. We have submitted a recombination map, so it can be all combined into one parcel for purposes of potentially selling the site in the future. This is the boundary survey, it reflects the total lease area. This was based off the lease with the State Highway Patrol, and so it shows that it is about two acres. So one of the core principles when we talk about being able to sell a particular property is being able to deem it S R plus first, based on the fact that there is no use for the property by the city or county government. And so as a result of that principle, we did evaluate multiple uses of this particular lot for various city facilities, for maybe a public recreation facility, and so the next few slides will talk about all the uses that we have evaluated, and why they might not make sense in this particular instance. So starting with our public works and engineering departments, we've evaluated, we have identified that they need additional space. That's also, and I will speak about this, but that is also evaluated in our capital improvement projects plan, and so like I said, I will talk about that. But after evaluation, we determined that it was cost prohibitive because we've got the environmental remediation that would need to happen, both above ground and underground, and that deals with asbestos issues, we've got gas tanks in the ground, you've got lead issues when you talk about the windows in the particular facility, and we're estimating that cost to be about $1 million to be able to remediate that site, to get it to a place where it could actually be used for something else, other than what it has been used for for the past 70-plus years. And so the other piece of it is, we've talked about the improvements that are on the site, the buildings. I mentioned earlier in my presentation that the recommendation is for them to be demolished because they are at the end of their useful life. We did evaluate doing upgrades to the facilities for public works and/or engineering. It was determined that the walls didn't have any insulation, they're, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing would need to be replaced, the entire building would need new windows, and then there's the consideration of needing to retrofit the building for ADA compliance. And out of that, it was recommended with the walkthrough, with public work staff, that the consultant strongly recommended that all the existing structures on site be demolished completely, and so that aligned with our appraisal feedback as well. The other piece is, we could consider demolishing the buildings, which would be about $150,000 to do, but that would still require the city and county to handle the environmental remediation if we held on to the property. The other big piece around public works and engineering was that it did not provide for space for future growth. So we could get in the buildings, outfit those, and/or demolish and build new buildings, but that particular site is only about two acres, and as we continue to grow, that's not going to provide us a, a use that can fit, fit the mold. And then you've got an issue with being able to park on the site. So the next departments that we evaluated the, the lot for, the site, were for our public safety department, so both Greenville Police, and also Fire Rescue. One of the things evaluated was a potential police substation being here on the site, and of course, as you all know, we've got a police substation that's a little bit further down East 10th Street, and the current substation is about 2,000 square feet, and it provides a satellite, satellite location for limited staff to be able to rotate in and out. So staff are not permanently stationed at this particular facility. And, and so that leaves us at a place where the use of the site for the substation is not necessarily financially sound, because you're talking about a 2,000-square-foot building on a, on a two-acre site. I think the other piece of this is that you- on a, on a two acre site. Um, I think the other piece of this is that you've got this substation where it needs to be, and so being able to move it to another location, it might not be able to fulfill its purpose that it's providing for that east, that East Tenth Street corridor. Um, the other piece we evaluated for specifically for Greenville Police was potentially a fire sta, um, a firing range, not a fire station. Greenville Police does not need a fire station, um, but a, a firing range, and so it was not necessarily conducive to having a firing, firing range in the heart of the city, right there on East Tenth Street. Um, and so, of course, also Fire Rescue was evaluated. You all know, we've got Station Six and our Emergency Operations Center, which is in close proximity, not too much further down, um, East Tenth Street, so that wasn't conducive either. So, last but certainly not least, we've got the evaluation of the site for a potential city park. Um, that has been mentioned on, on some occasions, and so a couple of things we looked at for this particular, um, piece is, it's not currently included in our forty million dollar Recreation and Parks Master Plan, um, as a park project. Of course, we've got other priority projects that have already been identified, um, and approved by council for us to move forward with. We also looked at it from a safety perspective. Of course, we know that Fifth and Tenth Street are high-traffic locations. We had a whole conversation with DOT about Tenth Street today. Um, and so you've got those two major thoroughfares, and you've got this property located at the corner, and then you've got Greens, Greensprings Park Drive, which those two particular, and I've got a map in here, but those two particular locations, it's not a natural transition. So, you've got Greensprings Drive separating the park in this particular site, and so you would have an increase in pedestrian traffic potentially, where you've got them crossing all of these major thoroughfares to get to this park site. Um, some other things we evaluated was the limited trees and natural vegetation. Um, there's been discussion, and we've identified three trees that are currently on the site, um, and based on conversations with our city arborists, there has been a recommendation of at least one of the trees, um, due to its current state, possibly two, based on, like I said, the assessment that, that they, um, performed on those particular trees. So, some other factors, I previously mentioned that it's not currently in our forty million dollar Recreation and Parks Master Plan, but it is also not currently identified and approved in our CIP Plan, so our Capital Improvement Projects Plan. Um, it does not account for this particular project or using the site for a project. Um, I will note that we've currently got about six point five million dollars in projects that would support our Public Works Department, and they're unfunded. This would include the renovation of the solid wastes and streets buildings. Um, and ideally, the proceeds that we are able to obtain from the sale of the site would be used to help fund, um, those particular unfunded projects. Um, some other factors, commercial use surrounding the site, and so I do have a map that speaks to this, and so like, as I mentioned, the property is on commercial, and so you have got commercial establishments, literally surrounding the site, from the convenience store with the, with the gas pumps. We've got Dunn's Body Shop across the street, across Fifth Street with the seafood market. Um, across Tenth Street, you've got a strip mall that's got a Family Dollar, it's got a gym in it, mattress outlet, so just wanted you all to show the various entities that are surrounding this particular property that we evaluated in terms of being able to use the site for a public use. And so, last but not least, um, as I mentioned, this is a property that is owned by the city and county, um, and we have had discussions with the county, and we have all come to the conclusion of it's best to recommend the site, um, for sale, could, site up for sale. Uh, maintaining ownership would require significant resources to be able to remediate the site, to get it to a place where it can be used for something, and this would prevent the property from being on the tax roll in the event we, we maintain ownership of it, and so of course, it has not been on the tax roll for about seventy years. Um, the last piece of this is the buyout. There's an option, maybe an opportunity, we could have conversations with the county to buy out their interest, and at minimum, we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars, and then the city would have to cover the costs to be able to remediate the property, which is estimated at about one million dollars. And so we would have to find funds to cover that cost, um, to get it, like I said, to a place where we could utilize the site. And so with that being said, based on that analysis, and like I said, various opportunities we've talked about for being able to utilize the site for public use, um, we, we've had conversations, like I said, with the city and county, and we started conducting activities to prepare the property for sale, including the appraisal I mentioned earlier. We went ahead and conducted the survey to produce a boundary, so we could identify what we were putting up for sale. Um, we did do a limited title search, and we did do an initial evaluation of environmental concerns, and so there are gas tanks under the ground on the site. Um, I mentioned the asbestos, I mentioned the lead with the windows, what have you, and that's, that is what we know about. So, there might be some additional, um, environmental issues that would have to be remediated that we would find during, during due diligence. Um, and so like I said, the city and county have determined that it's best for, um, for one party to be able to facilitate the necessary act, activities remaining for the sale of the property, and this is, um, our proposal tonight is entering into the interlocal agreement under the North Carolina General Statutes, and then seeking recommendation or seeking approval from city council to, for the city to be able to facilitate the upset bid process on the particular site. And so I'll go into specific information about what those next steps would look like, um, specifically the material terms of the interlocal agreement. This would be with the city and the county. Um, the initial term would be for two years, and it would include an automatic renewal unless there, there was early termination by either of the parties. What this interlocal agreement would do is give the city administration an oversight to facilitate the sale of the property, um, meaning we would choose a me, a method that was in the best interest of both parties, which we, you will see tonight, we are recommending the upset bid process. We would establish the starting bid price and then be able to advertise the property for sale. Um, I mentioned this earlier, but any proceeds from the sale less expenses incurred would then be dispersed between the city and county based on the ownership interest of eighty-three seventeen. And any proceeds that the city was able to obtain, we would use that to help fund some of our projects specifically towards Public Works and our Capital Improvement Projects Plan. So, just an overview of the proposed method for upset bid. Um, this process is permitted under state law, North Carolina state law, and it would be administered by our City Clerk's Office, and the proposed starting bid would be one million nine hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. I know that does not match the appraisal amount, um, but we recognize, um, that there is remediation that would have to be done on the property, and so it's not going to carry the value of what was provided in the appraisal, as it was subject to remediation. Um, and so this number is the average of the appraised value and the tax values, less the value of buildings and improvements and cost of demolition, because it's been made clear that the property, or the, the improvements and facilities on the site do not have any value to the property. So, as you move through the process, we would publish the notice of sale with that starting bid price. Initial bid would be open for thirty days, and we would continue to publish the high bids every ten days until we have a ten days passing, um, where we haven't had a qualifying upset bid. Each high bid must be sealed, and it's required to be accompanied by a five percent deposit. If we end up having two bids that are the same amount, the first bid received is what, um, would be eligible to win the, the upset bid. And these, this is just an overview of the terms of sale, if that's what council decides to move forward with here tonight. Um, the final high bid would end up being submitted to council for approval within thirty days after the upset bid period has passed. This would then require the county to come back into the picture, such that they could sign the purchase and sales contract with the prospective buyer, and then we would allow the prospective buyer to, um, go through due diligence. So, a full title search, plus environmental assessments, and any other, any, anything else they felt the need to do to get them to a point where they, they felt comfortable closing on the property. And then, the buyer would be required to pay the cash at closing. Just some other terms of sales, we would pass it by a limited warranty deed, subject to restrictive covenants. Um, this is probably key, if we get to a place where we didn't want to move forward, the city would reserve the right to withdraw the property from sale at any time before council accepted, um, the high bid, and then we would have the right to reject all bids at any time as well. And then again, proceeds remaining after deduction of all expenses would be split between the city and the county based on the ownership interest. And so I just wanted to go quickly back through the list, um, of what we evaluated for recommendation of next steps that we're making here for you all tonight, um, in dealing with the, of course, the property is jointly owned by the city and county, so anything we decide county has to agree to. We've got to be in agreement on that, even, even though the property interests are not fifty-fifty, we still have to consider, um, the county's input in terms of what, what we do in terms of next steps, um, with the property. And the environmental concerns I mentioned, dealing with the asbestos, the lead, gas tanks are in the ground, so you've got the above-ground and underground considerations when it comes to environmental concerns, and they would have to be remediated before anybody could use the site. Um, there are costs to demolish the facilities. Um, I mentioned this in that there, these current projects are, being able to utilize the site is not identified in our Capital Improvement Projects Plan, nor is it included in our Recreation and Parks Master Plan. We did evaluate the use by several city departments, and they are not conducive. Um, you've got the site that is surrounded by commercial uses with a lot of heavy traffic, and then we, of course, evaluated the use as, as a park, um, and you've got the, the major safety concerns with that site being on the corner of Fifth and Tenth, um, and then the limited vegetation, natural vegetation on the site. And so as a result of those various components and evaluations, analysis that city staff has done, conversations with the county in terms of what they wanted to see done with the site, um, we are bringing to you tonight to, and recommend that you all would approve the resolution and interlocal agreement between the city and county for the city to administer the process to sell the site, twenty-eight fifteen East Tenth and zero East Fifth. And then, the other motion, um, or recommendation that we're making here tonight is that you all would approve the resolution and authorize the disposition of this particular site, um, at a starting bid of one million nine hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. And, open for questions.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Well, actually, it's not so much questions, it's just kind of some comments to start that conversation that I hope that we will have as a council, um, about this property, and I appreciate that presentation very thorough, very well done, lots of considerations. A couple of things that do come to mind that it's not on the master park plan, I don't think, prior to perhaps this conversation, it, it had ever been considered, and I don't know, I don't want to speak for Don, but, but I, I don't think when, when we did the master park planning process, that, that anybody was really looking at this park, and I agree that it is surrounded by a lot of very heavy traffic, so I think those points were, were made and made clearly. One thing that I am interested in us, um, perhaps having a conversation about on council is, if you don't mind, uh, if you could go back, there's two slides I'd like us to look at. Um, one shows kind of the overview, and you can see where the greenery is, where the vegetation is, kind of the overview shot, I know it's kind of way back.
It was the aerial, let's see.
It was the aerial, yep. So, this one, yep. And so that parcel right there is the zero East Fifth Street parcel. It's also parcel number two nine three one oh, and if you've got the survey map, maybe you can show that. One of the things that I, I would, I would like us just to think about as a council is, um, this parcel, and there was another one that showed a little bit more clearly, but, um, that's it.
Okay.
Two nine three one oh. As you can see, this parcel, and if you're familiar with this area, this parcel really slopes very gently, in a very gently way, down to Greensprings Drive, and Greensprings Drive has very few cars on it, um, it's, it's, it's a very quiet street, and since it does have this nice natural slope, it rises up to where presumably development would take place. I wonder if council would consider holding on to parcel number two nine three one oh, just to maintain that green buffer, to have a little bit of space, because I, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm pretty sure that, that this is going to become a gas station.
I, I would, um, I would not step, I would not step out there and say that that Greensprings Drive does not have a lot of traffic, because if you look to the very north of the, the strip mall, that's, um, that's located on Tenth Street, the access of delivery points for that strip mall is Greensprings Drive, which you have a lot of large trucks that go through there to be able to make the deliveries to the, the service station and to, to the, um, the, the businesses that are located in there, so, and plus there's residential back there as well. So, it, I, I would not be willing to say that there isn't a lot of traffic on there, because, and to the contrary, there might be large trucks that are driving through there to make those, to make those deliveries for those locations.
And I think I ran into a bunch of traffic. There's a school over there, um, to the right, that I didn't realize I was running into the other day, um, that, that brings a lot of traffic to that area.
Walco.
Is it, is it Walco, St. Peters?
St. Peters, yeah. Unfortunately, it's a cut through, too. Um, I've done it myself.
Yeah.
I'm on Fifth Street, and except, because it, those that, I use that route to get home a lot, just because I like to see what's going on on Fifth Street to make sure that the students haven't messed up their loans, but nonetheless, as I'm traveling down Fifth Street, I get backed up at five o'clock, trying to get on Tenth Street, so what I'll do is I'll take that street to cut back around Tenth Street, so I can go around the traffic to get back home.
And I think my interest here, and I appreciate everything that's been said about the possibility of traffic there, and that, you know, we have to, we do have to deal with facts, and I appreciate that. We don't want to endanger anybody. At the same time, when I look at this, I see there's a little bit of green there that we could hold on to, to serve as a buffer, uh, between this commercial development that will go there and the park. Small little triangular piece of land, why not hold on to it?
And, and I like this, and I respect, Councilmember Blackburn, I did, you know, I spent a lot of time out there.
I know you did.
Last week.
I know you did.
Taking a look at those three trees. One, that, that large green area, a massive part of that is an oak tree, that is now sitting at a forty-five degree angle, that is going to fall. It needs to be pulled up out of the ground because it's going to fall. This morning, I had the arborist go out there, the, the, the tree, it's a gumball tree that is located to the, the large, to the north at the intersection. It has two trunks, and those two trunks are putting weight on the, on the limbs on each side. Eventually, one of those trunks, one of the limbs on that, on those trunks is going to also, uh, fall, to the point where the arborist next, this week and next week will be investigating whether it needs to come down in addition to the oak tree. So, that large green area is being made up by three trees, of which one needs to come down, and a second one's going to be in question.
And, and I appreciate, I know, I know that Kevin is a, he's an arborist, and I know he's made this good assessment of those trees. I'm just thinking about the grass. I'm thinking about the grass, the clean air, because again, once you get a commercial development, um, potentially a gas station, we do have a lot of those. They seem to be, you know, the.
We don't know that that's what that.
We don't, but they do seem.
Could be an urban meadow.
They do seem to be, it's going to be commercial development. It's zoned commercial.
Not necessarily.
And it would be, it would be, it would allow us to have a buffer between all the exhaust and the coming and going in our park there. Just a thought, and I, and I, I offer that to the council as a potential way that we could save a little bit of this green space right there next to the park.
I was curious, if that smaller parcel is also co-owned with the county?
It is.
I would offer one comment with environmental concerns, which I've been involved in in the past, and twenty-some years ago, I remember a small parcel that I dealt with, because I represented the person whose land was contaminated, was like a quarter million dollars. The green parcel you're talking about, if you look in the, in the, in the plat, you will see to the east of it, that was the garage area where they kept tanks and stuff, they worked on all patrol cars and stuff, so guaranteed that green stuff, and when they remediate, what they do is they go in and remove all the dirt, the contaminated dirt. They dig it up and pull it out, and so all that green space is going to be gone.
Well, we don't know that it's contaminated.
Oh, well.
Just that we don't know what kind of development will go there.
But, but here's my other comment, too. Uh, obviously, we know we have environmental concerns, that we can see there are buried tanks, and that's old school, guaranteed, and, and, and just food for thought. One point nine million dollar parcel, million dollars cleanup, that's two point nine million. We got to buy the county out. That's another three hundred thousand, so now we're with three million dollars, and then we got to go in and demolish everything, that's another hundred and fifty, so now we're up to three point four, five, and we hadn't put anything there and hadn't built it back yet. So, do we really, as a council, want to spend three and a half billion dollars on a ticker track to have it as a recreational for the Greenspring? I can tell you right now, I don't need any further consideration. I'm never going to vote for something like that, to spend that kind of money on two acres of, of land at that location. We can be a much better steward of a land, but here's something you should think about. When you start digging into that environmental stuff, and then all of a sudden, the people north of it, east of it, and west, all of a sudden, they start realizing they got contamination? Three million dollars is going to be cheap. I'm just saying, think about it. I don't need to put this out into a study thing, when you've got our amazing presentation tonight, amazing.
Thank you.
We're looking at three million dollars to invest in an asset that's not going to give us any tax return, to have a access to a Greenspring Park, we already know it's a danger. We, we don't need to go, we, my opinion. My opinion, we don't need to go send this to, we've heard all the information we need to hear. And anybody comes up here and says otherwise, I respect them to disagree with me, but I'm not going to vote to spend that kind of money on two acres of land in a very unsafe place between 5th and 10th Street today, tomorrow, or any other day as long as I want to appear. And I hope my councilmembers will share this, because we can spend that money in a better way in our recreation and park system elsewhere to the various projects we've got. I think that's a lot of money for two acres.
Well, to your point, I just want to be really clear, I'm no longer, I think the information was very clear. And so to your point, I would not make that as a suggestion for us to do. That is not being a good steward. What I am saying is, let's look at this one little parcel here, and perhaps hold on to it as a buffer between the development and the park.
I too would say that it's a very thorough presentation. Thank you very much for the information. I've had conversations with Councilmember Blackburn, as well as with you, Michael, and Danae earlier today, about I would have wanted to see this type of presentation in our workshops or whatnot, so that we could come to the table with all the information as opposed to having it here tonight, although I do appreciate having it here. I too am pretty clear on that. I think that in terms of other capital projects that we have, I think that we have priorities that the sale of this property would definitely benefit to get those up and going and making those a priority. But I think prior to this presentation, I think when we spoke earlier, I did have concerns about the information that we had at that point, but I appreciate the thoroughness that we have now, and it makes my decision clear.
And Councilmember Willis, we did have that conversation, and I'll own that, that it was not brought before a workshop, but that the rationale there is that in, at the January workshop, in preparation of the budget, in January of 2024, we presented a capital improvement plan of over $200 million worth of needs for this city, of which about 6.5 million were just at the public works yard for the betterment of facilities that our public work staff are working in every single day, plus, you know, the Recreation and Parks Master Plan, moving those projects forward, and this wasn't one of those projects. We looked at it as a surplus piece of property that would, the proceeds of which would go towards helping us to be able to fill some of those needs within the $200 million capital improvement plan, the $40 million Recreation and Parks Plan. I understand your, yes, and I will, we will take that into consideration as we move forward. We learn from where, we learn as we go. And we learn from that, and we're going to adjust to that in the future. It was just, that was the perception that we were taking, and we own it straight up.
I want to share.
Go ahead, Tony.
That I too spoke with Michael today, and Mary and I had a conversation. I also took the opportunity to ride out there. I'm very familiar with that park. It's actually one of my favorite parks in Greenville, because I used to visit it with my daddy when I was a little girl. But as I went out to look at the space today, while I do understand that you're, I respect your concern, but if you look at parcel 28964, as I don't have any extra eyes with me, there is no human activity there. So.
Which is there?
Right here.
Oh, that's the park.
So, and I knew that before I went over there, but I wanted to just go and, out of respect, look just to, to, you know, give that point of view a chance. But there's no human activity there, and so that actually serves as the barrier that's needed for any activity that would happen at the park for whatever might end up on parcels 29072 and parcel 29310. Now, y'all know that based on feedback from citizens, I'm the first to holler about a gas station. However, having said that, you know, if there were a request for that, they would have to ask for a special use permit, number one, to sell gas. But the other thing is, no matter what happened there, the vegetation that is already existing in the park would serve as a natural barrier to any human activity that would happen at the park. So that, along with the expense.
And I don't, I would not like to overemphasize this, but it can't be devalued either, is that in addition to the purchase price of the property, the development of such a, like a service station, something like that, is also going to have to have a significant amount of environmental cleanup, because they're going back and putting tanks in the ground.
Right.
So that means a significant amount of remediation on that property, which is going to be extensive, given the history of the, I mean, again, we don't know, I understand what Councilmember Blackburn's saying, we don't, but given the experience that we've had with sites such as the Imperial Site, and some of the areas, other areas, that has these type of activities that use a lot of oil and gas and just chemicals, there's the highly likelihood there's going to be a significant amount of cleanup on that.
Is the starting bid a minimum bid? Would we be willing to come below that?
Right, so that what we're proposing.
I'm just wondering who's going to buy this.
Yeah. So what we're proposing would be the minimum starting bid, so they would have to start at that 1.9 million, and then they would be bidding back and forth potentially. We might only get one bid, and that might be what we're offering it for.
But that's the floor, is my question?
We could evaluate another number, but that is what we've determined based on our quick formula of making sure we're accounting for the fact the property we know needs remediation, because we've taken a million dollars off of the appraised value.
And Councilmember Scully, that is the starting point, but you know, if we go down this process, say there's not a bid that comes in because of the, or that we enter into a bid that wins the bid, and they get into it, and they find out that our estimation of the environmental cleanup was understated, and it's much more than that, then there might be a need to come back and lower that price to move on the conveyance. But at this point in time, we feel comfortable best off the appraised value and the assessments that we have looked at internally at what those costs would be, that that's a fair price.
And the purchaser will, purchaser will be responsible for the remediation?
They will have their due diligence period, where they'll be able to do a Phase 1, a Phase 2 assessment on that to better understand what is below the ground and how, what is the status of the dirt underneath the asphalt.
And with respect to that conversation, you know, if we're going to sell it, this is an incredibly valuable piece of property. I mean, it's in an amazing location, so y'all, not to, you know, micromanage, you know, y'all are dealing with the bids, but I think if we're going to sell it, I hope we'll get what it's worth, because it is in an incredible location. And just to ask again to my peers, so is there any interest to pull off this western parcel?
Again, I went out there, and again, that one tree is leaning over more than the leaning tower of Pisa. And so I do, my feeling is that.
It's leaning.
It is leaning. But it's a pretty tree.
Councilmember Foreman's going to have some wood burn this winter.
Oh, my goodness. But to say again, I'd like to reiterate that the natural vegetation that already exists as part of Greensprings Park serves as any barrier that's needed for the park or any human activity, and those are organic and mature trees. So I can't imagine that anything that's put over there would interrupt any activity at the park. What I do want to ask out of respect to you is how do you feel now that we've elevated those thoughts?
Oh, no, this is, I mean, this has been just the kind of conversation that we wanted to have, and there's no question, the presentation was very clear, and had presented really strong data. You know, it just, whenever we have land that belongs to the people of Greenville, it is incumbent upon us to have the most open conversation possible, which we've done tonight, and I believe was done in a very factual and appropriate way. There is a part of me that doesn't like to get rid of public land. You know, I believe that when we have land, land is a very limited commodity, we don't get more of it. And so before we moved on this matter, it was very important to me that we have this kind of a thorough discussion, because this is land that, once it's gone, we never have again. And I think, you know, appreciate my peers on council for having this good conversation about it, and appreciate staff for all the work you've done, and I think this is what we got.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Second. 16 and 17?
Yes. For the resolution. No. That we accept the bid process as well as the resolution. That's my motion.
You had no idea what she was making a motion on.
He didn't care.
That could have been interesting right there. Any other discussion? All right, motion's been made by Council, or to me, Mayor Pro Tem Daniel, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0, and I just want to understand that was to approve items 16 and 17.
17. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation, madam.
Did your homework. All right, Mayor, item number 18, intent to apply and submit application for a continuum of care COC builds grant on behalf of Taft Mills Group LLC for Turnberry Trace. I'll now call forward Neighborhood Business Services Program Manager Renee Skeen for the presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There's a funding opportunity that has become available for the continuum of care builds grant. Taft Mills has requested that the City of Greenville apply on their behalf for their Turnberry Trace project. Okay, here's some key information. This is a federal grant from Housing and Urban Development, is intended to help address and reduce persons experiencing homelessness. This also aligns with the city's strategic housing goals. This project would, project funding gap would be $1.3 million. It's a 30-year affordable period. That means the rent rates will stay the same for 30 years. These important dates, the intent to apply deadline is September the 27th, and the full application deadline is October the 10th of 2024. Tonight, we have Tristan Williams with Taft Mills Group. She's the vice president, and she'll be coming forward to give you an overview of the project.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Council.
Good evening.
You may have heard of Taft Mills Group if you're local here in Greenville, so.
Just a couple times.
Few times. And just to kind of highlight a little bit, to go over for those that haven't heard of Taft Mills Group, we have, our principals, Dustin Mills and CJ Tyree, have developed 100, more than 100 affordable communities throughout four states of North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, Maryland, and starting to develop in Ohio. We have been awarded 13 9% projects in the last six funding cycles for tax credits, and we've been ranked the 33rd largest affordable housing developer nationwide in the Affordable Housing Finance Magazine. This is just a brief overview of our Greenville developments, those you are probably already familiar with.
Good-looking crowd right there.
Harrington Trace, which is located off of Fire Tower Road, and Arlington Trace, which some of you joined us at our ribbon cutting here recently. Just a high-level overview of Turnberry Trace, those you may already be familiar with. It was brought before council previously for another presentation, but it is a three-story, 72-unit senior development, which will house 55 and older potential tenants in one building, and inclusive of that building will have the community center, offering exercise, a library area, other common areas for the potential tenants to enjoy, all in the same building. It's age-restricted, 9% tax credits. You'll see a range of rents from 30 to 80%, but the potential tenants earn less than 60% of Pitt County's area median income. The development is deemed restricted to remain affordability for 30 years. Just to also, a side note, the site plan has already been approved, and it is permit-ready for issuance, so we are shovel-ready. We've already gone through our environmental with HUD, so they've already approved us for any environmental on this property. You'll see the total development cost is $15.8 million. It comes out at about $220,000 per unit, and our request today is for the City of Greenville to be the sole recipient for the request of $1.3 million. The site, for those not familiar, is off of, it's over in the Bills Fork area. You'll see it's on the backside of the Food Line on Turnberry Drive and Smithwick Drive, and again, it'll be the one building in that area as you come off of Fire Tower Road. Just another angle, just so that you can kind of see what is it, what it is in proximity to. You have the Tiebreakers, the Parkers, the Wendy's, and the Food Line.
They're going to hit the jackpot, whoever lives there. They're never going to have to cook.
And there is public transportation, so if you choose not to walk, you do have public transportation, easy accessibility as well. The site plan that has been approved is here, just so you can kind of get a bird's eye view of what the anticipated plan will look like on your left, and then on your right is the site plan that shows the amenities. We'll have some outside bench areas, and we are with the parking lot, and then everything is inclusive inside the one building for the community center available to the potential tenants. And then I'll leave it open for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I just would comment that Thomas Taft Jr., Tom Taft, and Dustin Mills, they did an excellent job on the project. We just recently did the opening on this beautiful project, and I'm sure they'll do just as good on this one likewise.
Yes, sir.
I'm really happy for them, and happy for what they're doing here, and great.
Yes, sir, thank you. That means a lot.
And I would mirror that. Hey, Tristan.
Hey, how are you?
I wrote a letter of support for this project for my organization because of the amount of work that we do with the homeless populations in the community, and what really touched my heart with the, with this particular project is that you go as low as 30% AMI, and that the rent will start at $450 per month.
That is correct.
That is exceptionally important to me, because as I say, like a broken record, the face of homelessness is changing in our community to now include families with children and senior citizens, and I know that there, that you guys are going to have a waiting list of seniors trying to get into these apartments. This is not remotely the amount of affordable housing that we need, just to echo that for the rest of the team, we need to continue to push forward, but it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And I'd also appreciate so much what Councilmember Foreman said about that this project has her support and the ongoing need, but the projects that Taft Mills Group has done, they are such worthy projects, and they, that they are with the intention of affordability, and the people I see living in them are, you know, just, it's a, it's a, these are beautiful communities, and there's one near where I live, and I'm over there quite a bit, and just seeing the children and the happy families, and I know that these are very beautiful projects, and really appreciate the work.
Yes, thank you.
I want to add, thank you, and just love the location, especially for senior citizens, that they don't have to drive to the grocery store, have restaurants that they can walk to, it's just really ideal. So thank you so much for making this an important part of your business and for investing our community in affordable housing. My stepdad is in senior living affordable housing place here in Greenville, and I'm so thankful for that, and thankful for the families that this is going to help out, so I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for your time, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so after that presentation, the staff recommends approval for submission of the intent to apply and the application for the COC builds grant on behalf of Taft Mills Group.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniel, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 19, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 2 to the 2024-25 City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Number 24-038, Capital Projects Fund Ordinance Number 17-024, Special Revenue Grants Fund Ordinance Number 11-003, and Donations Fund Ordinance Number 18-062, and an amendment to increase the city clerk's FTEs by .5 for designated part-time staff with a no-budget impact. I'll call forward our CFO, Jacob Joyner, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
We have Budget Amendment Number 2 to the fiscal year 25 Budget Ordinance. This will impact various operating funds, capital project funds, special revenue grant fund, the donations fund, as well as the occupancy tax fund. Item A is to recognize encumbrance carryovers in operating funds, which is obligated but unspent funds from the prior year. That will increase pretty much every single operating fund that the city operates in, including the general fund at 2.2 million, the vehicle replacement fund at 4.8 million, and the facility improvement fund at $2.7 million. Item B will be to establish a new project management department with funding coming from the Recreation and Parks Department. That will be in the general fund and will have no budgetary change overall. Item C, which will be recognize additional funding from the opioid settlement trust, that will be in our special revenue grant fund, and will increase that fund by $52,000. We have item D to recognize. We have item D to recognize a police wellness grant. That'll be in the general fund and increase the general fund nineteen thousand dollars. We'll recognize the NC Tri-Party Grant within the housing fund, which will increase the housing fund by seventy thousand dollars. Item S will be to appropriate sanitation fund balance for vehicle purchases, which will increase the sanitation fund by one point six million dollars. We have item G to recognize, uh, urban search and rescue grant for fire rescue within our special revenue grant fund, which will increase the special revenue grant fund by ninety-four thousand dollars. Item H will be to recognize police donations received for the purchase of school backpacks, and that will increase our donations fund by two thousand dollars. Item I will be closing out stormwater projects. These projects is the Town Creek Culvert Project, the Watershed Master Plan Project, and Stormwater Drain Improvements Project, and that will lead to an overall decrease of forty-seven million dollars, which just represents completed projects within our stormwater program.
Just a cool forty-seven million. Every day.
And then item J will be to add an additional half FTE to the City's Clerk's Office for a designated part-time assistant with no budgetary impact.
How about that one?
That will bring the, uh, budget amendment number two, brings the City of Greenville operating fund, uh, budget to, overall to one hundred and ninety-one point two million dollars. And we ask that Council approve budget amendment number two.
So moved.
Wow, you've got the fastest motion of the night. Motion was made by Councilwoman Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Hey, put that one in your back pocket. Fastest motion of the night. Alright.
So Mayor, we have a review of the September twelfth City Council agenda. I'll ask our Public Information Officer to display that on the screen.
Cue the music.
So that the community can see the agenda items that we will be presenting in, in a public hearing on Thursday. Just give that a few seconds. So Mayor, under the City Manager Report.
I always cringe sometimes when this comes up.
Uh, no, you never know what to expect.
It used to be so cut and dry, but now I just never know what to expect.
Did you know that it was the city's two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary?
I've heard that once or twice, isn't it?
We just happened to have the newest installment in our video series celebrating our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. And I will now ask our Public Information Officer to let rip.
Let rip.
Well, I thought, you know, the Utilities Commission was an honor, and of course, it wasn't an elected, uh, position, but it was kind of like a training ground, or a lot of people came from city, from the Utilities Commission would run for City Council, and, and that was somewhat of an ambition I had, see if I liked it or not. And one of the first tasks that I had was to, uh, uh, monitor the situation with Floyd. And of course, we had the horrible flood, and, and it was just horrific for this whole community. And we, uh, one of our mission was keeping our water plant open. And so we launched a little, small sixteen-foot aluminum, uh, boat from the bridge. I mean, if you go to the bridge today on Highway eleven, uh, and see how far it is above the Tar River, you'll be surprised. We actually put the boat in from that level. Got in, myself, uh, Lorraine Shin, and, uh, the mayor at the time was Nancy Jenkins. And none of us were small, and the fireman that was handling the boat wasn't small. And, and we rode down the river to the water plant, and the gondles, if you've been on, in boats before, the water was about that far away from being in our boat. And I thought, this is the dumbest thing we've ever done in our lives, to have way too much weight in these little boats. We saw dead animals come by, all kind of debris. I mean, there were hogs, cows floating by, and if you, if we had turned the boat over, there was nowhere we could go. There was no land. I mean, there was, it was all water. And so we got to the water plant, and, uh, it was probably one of the biggest miracles that, that Greenville has ever pulled off. I can remember Randy Emery, bless his soul, has passed on, that was with Green Utilities forever. He was out there in a tee-shirt sweating. So many of the staff volunteered, and prison labor came in and saved the day for us, putting sandbags up around the water plant. If that plant had flooded, Greenville would have been in, in really, really bad shape.
So it's hard to believe that it's been twenty-five years since Hurricane Floyd came through our region, and those that were around here know just how devastating it was to our community. And there, there are certain moments in the life cycle of a community that, that occur that change it forever. And clearly, parts of our community were changed forever, that are still feeling with the impacts of that today. And we should never forget of, of how that impacted the lives of the citizens of this community, that are, again, still dealing with it in many ways. But also, what we learned from that with flood mitigation, and some of the things that we are working at here today, and this council is, is projects moving forward, is stemmed from what we learned during that devastating process. And even remembering such stories that we heard right there, that even during very bad times, we're able to come together and by the grace of God, be able to protect this community from either further damage. So we should never forget the impacts that, that Floyd had on our community, what we learned from it, and continue to think about the people that, that were impacted at that point in time, and the generations that have been impacted since. I am going, going to end by, uh, by, uh, sharing one of, uh, Councilmember Robinson saying, "Making Greenville Greater."
Grow Greenville greater.
We are, we have, we have talked a lot about making Greenville greater here tonight, from everything from the art walk in a trolley to a twenty-two million dollar, very, uh, progressive project to, to replace our bulkhead that will allow our community not only to better embrace the river, protect us from flooding, but also be able to embrace the future potential that we could have down at the Town Common. And we were also able to have NC DOT come in and talk to us about the projects over the next decade that we have on the major thoroughfares here in the City of Greenville. I do thank Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Blackburn for, 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 for taking the tour with us today. And Councilmember Foreman was not able to make it because some, some meetings that came up. But what we were able to have is some really good conversations about the, the, the needs of our community from a transportation perspective. I stand on it that we are a very thriving, growing community with a, with heck of a great quality of life. The people that live here are very special, but are only, that, the, what impacts us moving forward is our system of transportation. And we've got to work together with NC DOT to make this a priority at the state level in funding to look out for our region, because only we are gonna be able to look out for our region. Everybody's sitting around this desk, and the staff out there that's working hard to make sure that we advocate for every top dollar we can to improve our infrastructure. Mayor, that's all I got.
Wonderful, absolutely wonderful. Amazing City Manager Report. We're gonna move on to comments by the Mayor and the City Council. How about, let's start with Councilmember Scully.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to highlight what I'm calling the Community Service Consent Agenda. Uh, there were some really wonderful things on there that I wanted to lift up, because we blew through it pretty quickly. The infrastructure improvements, um, forty-three and two sixty-four. We had speed limit revision from fifty to forty-five in a really dangerous part of our city. Uh, we had, um, funding for Downtown Greenville Partnership, lifting up the businesses in our center city. We had some funding stuff for Boviet Solar, working hard to bring them here and working towards that goal. We had a Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters Grant to improve, um, some of our firefighter, firefighting facilities and equipment. We sent some property to Habitat for Humanity, so they can continue their great work in our community. We leased a building, again, to the Magnolia Arts Center for one dollar, so that they can continue their great work with the arts community in our town and city. So I'm just so thankful for all those things, and just wanted to lift those up and say, uh, how proud I am to, to serve on this body with these people and in this city. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Move on to Councilmember Blackburn.
Oh, thank you. Matt, you said that so beautifully. I absolutely agree. The consent agenda was just really so full of, uh, things that I think we can all, as a community, feel so good about, and I specifically wanted to pull out Magnolia Arts, because I've attended a couple of their productions lately, and just outstanding theater. We're so fortunate to have them, and from the time when they started as a small nonprofit in two thousand and five to what they have become today. And if you saw Jesus Christ Superstar, it was just a real, full theatrical production with outstanding talent. So thank you to Magnolia Arts, and Matt, thank you for all the things you mentioned. This is gonna kind of be like the Oscars. I got so many people that I really want to thank in our community. I want to start with thanking Dionne Evans, who spoke at, um, one of our meetings a couple of weeks ago to talk about the dangers of using pine straw as mulch. I wasn't aware of that. So really appreciate her bringing that to our attention as we're looking at our, revising our Unified Development Ordinance, and, uh, or actually creating a Unified Development Ordinance. So we can look at things like that. So Dionne, thank you. Ms. Evans, thank you very much. The other thanks that I wanted to put out is to a group that does so much work and is really unsung, which is the Pet Food Pantry. They recently, um, came across a situation where someone had cats that had not been sterilized for years and years and had multiplied. And the person had a really kind heart, but just got overwhelmed. They went in, not only did they, um, remove the kitties and get vet care for the kitties, but they're actually helping this person to, uh, clean up the home and make improvements to the home. Got an air conditioner for this person. So Pet Food Pantry, you're the best. Appreciate everything you do. Would like to, um, thank the DOT today for coming and taking the whole afternoon, the Department of Transportation, as well as our local board member, um, Mary Jo.
Alco.
Alcoke, and, um, just an outstanding afternoon. So if you're out there and you're listening, thank you so much. I know it's so hard to find even an hour for Zoom meeting, but folks came in from all around and spent a solid two hours with us on the road, and then came to our meeting, so thank you very much. Another thing that I, I want to mention is, um, you know, I think tonight was really interesting to hear us talking about foliage and vegetation. And, um, as we grow as a community, we're gonna start losing, potentially losing foliage and vegetation, potentially losing heritage trees, and how important it is to have conversations whenever we have green space, because, um, it's precious, and you can't just get a fifty-year-old tree in the blink of an eye. And a sapling does not replace a heritage tree. So I appreciate the folks in our community who are helping us to focus on trees and foliage management, and hope that we, as a community and as a council, will continue to have discussions while we grow. And then my last thank you is to our staff for all the work that you do every day of the week, and especially before council meetings, from the City Manager to the Clerk, to our attorney, to, um, all the staff members who work so hard to provide information to us, to answer our questions. No request is ever too much, and it is greatly appreciated, and how much respect I have for you as a council member, because I know how much work you all are doing every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Robinson.
I can only high-five, fist bump, and whatever else to Councilmember Blackburn. We got the best staff, in my opinion, that anybody could ever have. Not just best staff, but the heads of the departments throughout the City of Greenville, all the way from one to the other. And I keep saying that. I think tonight is an example, and I, I cannot agree more. I mean, to come up here today and do that presentation, and the thoroughness with which you did it, to leave basically no question left. I mean, you considered every potential point of view that could be considered, and you gave it to us. And, and, you know, uh, there was a, there was a desire to maybe have this as a private, I mean, not private, but, you know, workshop, to get more. But you, you, you came to bat and hit a home run with it and gave us all the data. And I think that, again, is just the excellence with which the staff we have. So to all the staff, I only echo Councilmember Blackburn's thing. We've got the best, and thank you because you make our job so much easier. And that's to everybody, including all the departments out there. Uh, I cannot appreciate you enough, and, and I'm a big team player. We can only be successful if we have a really good team, and everybody on the team counts, and so we got a great team. Number two, um, I am so happy for the Greenville All-Star, Tar Heel eleven All-Star baseball team, and, and the Jackie Robinson Baseball League ten and U. I mean, when they travel to these venues and they're winning and producing, people, "Where are you from?" "I'm from Greenville." "Oh, we have sports down in USA." They're helping put us on the map, and plus, uh, I chose to get out of my seat because these coaches are making a difference in these young men and women's lives. I mean, all these coaches, you know, they, they're not getting paid salaries. They're doing it because they love it, and they're role models. That's why I went out and talked to all these coaches, because I've been a coach, I know what they're doing. And, uh, congratulations to all of them again and again. I hope you guys watching at home, if you see these young kids and the coaches, you take a moment to stop and congratulate them, because I know from what I do for a living that a coach can make a difference in where a kid winds up at. And I really mean that with all my heart. They can make a difference in where that kid goes, and what he does, and what she does. And so along the same lines, I want to congratulate our mayor, because his team, the AU, won the gold bracket, the girls' Southeast Top Gun softball tournament. Is that right, Mayor? And he, what a great picture he had. That's another accomplishment that was over at the, uh, that complex east, west of us somewhere. We're gonna fix that, though. So congratulations to, to them.
A lot of money over there.
I know. So congratulations to, to the mayor and his team. Again, I echo the mayor. I mean, it's just, you can't, you can't overemphasize what coaches do for young kids. Uh, also, I'd like to emphasize that many of you may know Kristy Overton, or Kristy Overton-Johnson. She has a ministry, and on the September nineteenth to the twenty-first, she is having a revival of hope. Her heart is strong in the ministry, and it's gonna be both for men and women. It is open, no tickets required. It's gonna be like a revival tent, like the old school. It's gonna be on Fire Tower, by the Fire Tower, and there're gonna be, uh, three days and five events for both men and women. No ticket required, just show up. It's gonna be a great event, and, uh, they got some really good speakers. I'm just gonna mention a couple of them, because you already know them. Jeff and Mincy Bird, that may name sound familiar, because they are the mom and dad of Parker Bird, whose life was changed when he came to play baseball here. He's gonna, they're gonna share their story. And also Coach Godwin, right along the same, he's gonna be a guest speaker. Likewise, in addition to other speakers, they're really good. So you can go on to Kristy, uh, I like to still call her Kristy Everton, but Kristy Overton-Johnson's ministry website. And, uh, look at this, it's gonna be a, a great three nights, and, and full of prayer and worship and stuff. And so please come out, and there're gonna be some really good speakers. So I'll keep preaching that up also, so I hope you guys will come, if you have a chance, to go out there and see that. And ECU's two and O. It wasn't pretty, but it, but it counts as a win. And, and so, uh, this weekend, they're playing Appalachian State, so root for ECU, and let's hope they can bring, bring three home. It's gonna be a really good game. I'm hoping, somebody said, "I'm hoping." It wasn't pretty wins, but let's hope they can bring another one out. So Mayor, I think that's my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
Three things that I would like to lift up tonight. Number one, I do want to mirror, um, the need for us to, um, continue to keep protecting and preserving the character of our community through looking at our vegetation. That is of the utter most importance, and, um, do want to lift that up and agree. Also, want to lift up our UDO, Unified Development Ordinance. Um, we have completed our community forums, but want to just see, um, remind the citizens that I will be continuing, um, to do community feedback, and giving our citizens the opportunity to, um, uh, proactively get involved and engaged to give their input as it relates to future land use and development, because that is of the utmost importance. And then lastly, uh, we've got our presidential debate coming up. And, um, uh, because of the level of grassroots work that I do in the community, I spent the second half of Labor Day studying George Washington's farewell address, as I was sharing with Michael earlier today. And y'all, I am a bit nerdy, so I do this type of thing all the time. And, um, because of the amount of polarization in our community as we are approaching this upcoming election, um, I was reminded of his farewell address in that, number one, he, uh, he made three points, and, uh, or warned us of some things in that farewell address. Number one, he asked us to celebrate our achievements. And I, I think we need to continue to do that. But number two, he warned against alliances with, permanent alliances with foreign countries, rather for us to have temporary alliances for emergency purposes only. for emergency purposes only. But the third warning that he gave us during his farewell address was, he warned against the potential dangers of political parties, because oftentimes, those agendas could be more aligned with the party than they are the best interest of our citizenship. And so, you all know that I talk over and over about order of operations. For me, order of operations is in mathematics, that if you do things in a certain order, you always get your problems right, and it's the same way in life, and that is to put people and love first. So, as we are approaching this, even on the things that we might disagree on, we can agree to disagree and still put people and love first. And I was reminded of that as I was reading through George Washington's farewell address.
Very nice. Very nice. Very nicely stated. Councilmember Willis?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations again to the Jackie Robinson Baseball League. I also wanted to acknowledge we have September eleventh coming up as a day of remembrance and a day of service for so many, as well as we have our Small Business Technical Assistance Program that's starting on Wednesday night. So excited about this. About a dozen small businesses are going to be able to be coached and helped through the partnership of a local consulting firm, and it can really change the trajectory of a small business. And so, I am excited to see the city take a step in that direction to help support small businesses. So, thank you to our city manager and our staff for having that vision and getting that done. And also, our Police Community Relations Committee is going to be meeting on tomorrow night at Town Bank Tower at six P M. And the topic of the workshop and presentation by our own Chief Sauls and Chief Suggs with the ECU Police Department is surrounding, is around community and student safety. So, any students that are able to come out and community members, it should be a great discussion and a very worthy topic to support. So, I think that's all my comments. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Your approach advance?
I piggyback on what everyone has said, and I also like to take some time to have a moment of silence for those victims, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six, to be exact, who died twenty-three years ago on September eleventh, and for all of those who have died since that time, and those who are suffering from the effects of that time. Let's have a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I guess I'm just going to reiterate what several of our councilmembers have said about congratulations to Jackie Robinson League, our ten-U and twelve-U teams that did an incredible job of going out to Maryland and representing the City of Greenville and bringing home championships. Congratulations. We're excited about that. Congratulations to our ECU Pirates that are two and oh. Like Councilmember Robinson said, I hope everybody goes out and supports them this weekend against App State. Hopefully, we'll bring home a third victory. That would be an excellent start to our season. So, hopefully, we can go cheer our Pirates on, and they do very well. Congratulations to my team, my Heartbreakers two thousand sixteen team. We have had one heck of a year. I think at one point, we lost ten games in a row, and I couldn't sleep because I didn't know how to fix the problem. And we have grown up exponentially over the year, and our girls finally won. We got into the gold bracket, which is the top bracket, and we brought home the victory this weekend. So, I was very proud of those girls. They fought. They were resilient throughout the entire tournament. We left my house at six forty, six forty-five A M. We got back into Greenville at eight thirty. Long day. Long day. My legs were tired. So, I can just imagine, my legs were tired, all those girls were tired. So, congratulations to all of our Heartbreakers. And softball season starts. I just had, we just had our draft. Yours Truly is coaching eight U and twelve U again this year. So, I've got practice tomorrow night from five thirty until about eight thirty tomorrow night. So, I will be out on the softball field, but there's no better place that I would rather be than out there helping and enriching the lives of young girls, and teaching them the game, and teaching them things about life. So, come out. I'll be sure to share my schedule with everybody. I'm sure you guys will be just dying to see some eight U and twelve U softball. But Sarah Law has got a great complex out there, a great program. As you can see, we've got the World Series Champions that are from there. We've got two other teams that have been the Little League Softball World Series, so there's some great talent that comes out of there. So, hopefully, you'll come out sometime this fall and check us out. With that, I need a motion to go into closed session, read by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding it closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section one forty-three, three eighteen point eleven, A three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body, in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the public body considering and giving instructions concerning the handling or settlement of a claim or judicial action.
Does that motion?
Mostly do what he says.
All right. So, we've got a motion by Councilmember Foreman, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Officially, closed session.
I want to thank you for slamming that flag, man.
Hey, I want to wake you.